And thirteen. And the budget. Ah, for the first, for the fourth, two thousand and fourteen will be done hopefully in February of two thousand and thirteen. Right? Anything else to add to that? And I'll make a motion that the Finance and Administration Committee of November twenty-ninth be adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I want to give Brad a good job he's done. Congratulations.
Then we can go on to planning and zoning and building.
I want to call the order, the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee of November twenty-nine, two thousand and twelve. Will the minute taker reflect? Same members are present, I declare a quorum. Next item, approval of minutes dated November eighth, two thousand and twelve. I make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, report and recommendation on changes to the sign amortization schedule of the sign code. And I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, look for a second, and then I'll entertain questions and any discussions. So I did make a motion on the amortization section of thirteen dot nine oh seven with respect to applicability, amortization schedule, and definition of monument sign as noted in the November twentieth packet. I do have the second. And anything on the question? Mr. Mayor.
Just one. New businesses that come into town, if it has an old pole sign there, are they going to do the monument sign or are they just going to replace the facing?
If the sign has been well maintained, it has not fallen into a state of disrepair beyond fifty percent of its original value, they would be allowed to do a face change.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation on the fee structure for private companies' use of city right-of-way. And with this, I'll ask Mr. Forrest to take his through, his fee structure suggestion. And I believe we're going to be the leaders in this area, so it's an interesting discussion. Mr. Forrest?
Thank you, ma'am chairman. As was discussed at the previous committee meeting, we do have private companies now wanting to use our right-of-ways for installations of fiber optic cables that they are going to be using to generate revenues for themselves. And although we have come to terms with contracts with two separate providers that have already installed their products, we really did not have a definitive fee structure, you know, to figure out something that would be equitable not only for the city but for these vendors as they want to install their, their, their lines. I did a survey of, sent out feelers to about forty different communities, only one responded saying they do not charge. I talked to a couple of the neighboring communities. Addison, Tipp, right now does not charge a fee to, to users of things in their right-of-way. Bensonville is currently discussing what kind of a policy that they want to implement, so this does give us a chance, as you said, to kind of be a leader in the area. Since I prepared this memo and put it in the packet, I'm going to add to my recommendation. I did go back and when, when the minutes of the last meeting were available, I reviewed those, and I saw that it was discussed at the time to go with a, you know, a minimum flat rate fee and then a per lineal foot cost. When I was doing the analysis prior to that, it seemed like a per foot cost made more sense, but after reflecting on this again and recalculating some of the numbers, I would say, at the time, we discussed the possibility of a five thousand dollar flat fee plus a dollar fifty per lineal foot to be charged to vendors when they want to install their products in our right-of-way when they're going to be using it to generate revenues for themselves. So that would be my recommendation to you.
Any comments? Alderman Woods?
How's that in keeping with the two? Two companies that we passed, I mean, as far as charging?
Going with the five thousand flat fee and a dollar fifty per foot, when you figure that out with the two contracts we already have, it's actually much closer to the real figure than if we were to institute a two dollar and thirty cent per lineal foot. So I think it'll be much easier to defend either one of these companies should they question.
Right, okay, thanks, that was my only concern.
Admiral Lozera?
John, because we're charging a fee, is there any liability that we have towards these companies? In other words, if, if something happens to their lines, are we responsible at all for this?
I believe when the city attorney was kind of giving his opinion and how this whole setup works per the contracts that we have now, I believe the only time we could possibly be held liable would be if we maliciously and purposely damaged somebody's lines. Other than that, it's their responsibility to, to maintain them and take care of them.
I'm going to make a motion to recommend a city council approval of a five thousand flat fee plus a dollar fifty per lineal foot on the fee structure for private companies' use of city right-of-ways, or a second?
Second.
Anything further on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is items to be considered at future meetings, which currently there aren't listed. Mr. Forrest?
Thank you, yes, I would like to add something on to items for future meetings. Kind of going back to the sign ordinance issue tonight, you know, I think we, we made some great advancements as far as issues that current businesses have and making it easier with the signs. But what I would like to do over the next few months is review our existing sign ordinance, you know, and again, work with the Streetscape Committee and come back to the council. I anticipate there will be some revisions to our existing sign ordinance because the time it was put together, it was a whole separate time period with what was going on in Wooddale with possible redevelopment and so forth. And I think there's sections in there that may not be relevant anymore, and also, I think there's some new trends in advertising, for example, these vertical flags that are mounted on poles that you're starting to see everywhere. Those are not really specifically addressed in the sign ordinance, so I would like to put that on, you know, list for future items to be discussed.
Okay, that's, completely agree. Any other items? I make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to call the order, Public Safety and Judicial Committee. Roll call, everybody's the same that was here at the last meeting of, of planning. I make a motion for, to, on the minutes for the meeting of October eighth, two thousand and twelve.
November eighth.
November eighth.
What?
November eighth.
November, excuse me, November.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to make a, a recommendation for an amendment to ordinance for impoundments of vehicles on section thirteen, fifteen, and, on, in the section of eighteen, two, twelve oh eight A, I believe, of, of the amendment. Okay? Chief's going to take over.
Yeah, this is regarding changes that were made to state statute last year for specifically retail theft and solicitation of a prostitute. Under our current vehicle impound ordinance, we're allowed to impound a vehicle administratively for violations of those state laws. Well, since our ordinance was passed, the state law reference number, the, the number in the actual state code has changed. So our ordinance, in order to enforce impoundments under those things, technically has to be changed to reference the new state section numbers, not just the title of the offense. So that, all this is, is a, an amendment to chapter fifteen, section fifteen point eight oh nine A of the ordinances regarding impounding of vehicles.
Is there a motion?
There's a motion on it?
I'll second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'm sorry, but my eyes are giving me trouble today. I have to go to the doctors tomorrow for new glasses, so I'm having trouble, the, the cataracts that were taken out of my eyes, it's just starting to form right, and I, I can't see properly. I'm sorry, I apologize. But I'll be okay next week. For future meetings? Is there anything for future meetings? Chief?
I do have two things, I hope, I had mentioned it last time, but I hope to have ready the liquor and video gaming violations recommendations by the next committee meeting. And also, I've recently met with a collection company regarding collection of past due fines in the police department, specifically railroad violations and parking tickets, so I'd like to bring a proposal to city council for that, for a new company to use. So I'd like to do that in December.
That would be good. That would be good, thank you. Anything else? Anybody got? And I would like to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we call the Public Works Committee order, we're going to take a five-minute break.
This one here, I see better, like this, than with these. What? I see better, I see better, I see better with these off than with these on. They operate, you put a, a new, new, uh, reflect, uh, something in this one. Yeah, in the farnia, to help my vision. And they told me I have to get new glasses because I can't see through the old, and yet I still can't see through with the other one yet, so. That'll be something that Peter's going to say in his thing. I got somebody saying that I'm too old to run for election. That's what they said. The latest thing somebody's pushing it. Just tonight, tonight, I just, it just started getting blurry, I should have rubbed over. I've been, I've been. I tried. What?
My last hurrah, you didn't even let me talk.
You said something. I gotta walk, I gotta go tomorrow, I gotta fly. Big, I can read it. Big, I can read it. But I'm having trouble.
Change it. Yeah, maybe like don't touch it.
I hear you, you gotta, you gotta go.
I will. Like I said.
Changing a job.
Oh, okay. Is that the number? I can't figure out.
Yeah. It was like I was one weirdo. And they came back.
Cause I, I remember, I can't remember exactly when, but I do recall, I'm big guy.
Sir?
Yes. Where are we? No.
You gotta get through videos. You gotta reach you, but I gotta get me out of there. I know, that's what we're like, we're actually.
The same question was asked. Actually, I don't know. I live out the Iron York, but the last I heard, their, their fee wasn't high.
Well, I need to shut this off.
Does that have anything to do with it?
There's nothing.
I thought it's, John, John brought it up. The next couple of weeks, before they come in. Right now, right now, right now, they're saying, they went over the order. We're going to make sure it's in there and has. Well, it was up in the penway. Bigger than that, man. Just like I got called. Or eight feet long by recent calls. Says come gamble this year. I mean, they're big holes, right? Oh, yes, we can do this. Yes, we can. Yeah, right? Yeah. Turtleneck? It's not a dicky, but maybe I'll bring out the dicky next time. Yeah, it was. You know how much those water barrels are? Rain barrels? Oh. We buy them here, don't we? We got them here, don't we? Don't we sell them here? What is that thing out front for? We're selling them. Yeah, I didn't know if we had them or something, so that's what I was asking. Mr. Hernandez was giving you a hard time the other day? Mr. Hernandez was giving you a hard time the other day? Tried to pay his, uh, mother's water bill or whatever? Yeah, he lives in his mother's house. He takes care of his mother. Barely outside that house. I don't think she's driving him. See, or, or, uh, Carlos, someone that was here that day, that, that was, uh, that was Carlos.
You always have, you always have one here, just in case.
I don't know, Oscar, I don't know, Oscar lives there. They pay, they pay the bills. Joseph. Oh, he waters them, waters all the flowers, Oscar's out there watering all the flowers. They're in Spanish, so you know they got a garden. Oh, they're, they're all living there. Oscar, Oscar and David. I don't know who else is in there. It's like four cars that they drive, wherever you think. Huh?
See if they got stairs.
Should.
Probably don't have. I know three cars on us street that don't have.
What streetlights are we talking about?
We'll give my rebate when he comes back next year. When mine's up, next year we'll rebate, we'll just cut it back.
It's up to six point one million dollars? We don't own the streetlights?
No. No, I, oh, okay.
Well, I, I drove through, had a, without picking up some tile for a job, ran into Scoot back. We're talking, I go, where are you at? Just Dale. Royal, where, it was not Royal Oaks. Well, yeah, you know, trying to get sidewalks, you know, ah, geez. Are we ready? Yeah. Are you? Are you? Yeah. Really? Really? What's the matter with those people? I'm just saying. That's why I go, oh. People feel like they move back to the city, you know? You know what? Fifteen feet from the sidewalk. No, there's not. And it would, it would, I would, in this particular case, would lose the, the. Could you do me a favor? Could you give me a hard copy of this report?
Like you said, that's why people came.
Oh, get me one too. I want it, because I was totally confused. All right, we'll call, we ready to go? Call the Public Works Committee order. Make the minute taker, same people are present. I'll make the motion, prove the minutes for November eighth, two thousand and twelve, that is my motion.
Second.
Corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
All in polls? All in polls? Report and recommendation, well, I guess we may go our order here. You want to go in the right order, or, okay? So we won't take our order. Uh, report and recommendation, change order number two for Pilote Construction Corporation two thousand and twelve Street Sidewalk Improvement Program in the not to exceed two hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. That is my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I've got a question.
What, question? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Mr. Woods?
My question, it has the timing. Why is, I mean, we're approving this change order and everything's like done.
Go ahead.
Yes, this is change order number two. The first change order was for the fire station parking lot. There is actually going to be a third and final balancing change order. This contains most of the work that needs to be, whether it was added to the contract, but there are still the subcontractors to the general contractor who haven't agreed to final quantity. So we are anticipating one further final, very small balancing change order. But the timeframe is really just try to wrap up the main items of work so that we can bring before you another pay request on the job. There's two pay requests left on this project.
But shouldn't, I guess my question is, shouldn't we had this earlier, sooner? I mean, the sidewalks have been completed for a little while, anyway.
Yes, sir. Part of the problem was just getting the contractor to agree to the quantities that we measured out in the field. We had a lot of disputes back and forth over the amount of work that was done, and it took some time to work back and forth with them to get them to agree to quantity.
Okay, thank you.
I hope in the next future projects, we don't have these, and then we start paying them out. I hope we keep them in, in track.
Yes, sir.
So there was a motion, there was a second, there was a, all in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Want to poll, item number five, report and recommendation, pay request, partial four for H R Green, Irving Park Road, Wooddale Road Intersection, Safety Improvement, Phase Two, not to exceed of sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Motion carries. Report and recommendation, pay request, number six, reporter, report, recommended pay, pay request, partial six of Maximal Construction Corporation for North Waste Water Treatment Plant Upgrade Phase One A Project, and not exceed the amount of four hundred and eighty, eighty thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-one cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Concern? All in favor?
Aye.
Could I do a roll call then, if I can't get ayes over there?
No.
Let's do a roll call. Let's do a roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Sharkey? Alderman Sizmarzki?
Alderman Sizmarski? Alderman Yuji Musley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Motion carries. Report of recognition, pay requests. Final three, ALAM Construction Corporation for Stonem and Street Reconstruction, not to exceed the amount of ninety-eight thousand, five hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. That is my motion.
Second.
I will, uh, one question on that. Is the punch list completed?
Punch list is complete. This job is a hundred percent complete.
And what will be our retainer on the, the rest of this money?
At this, at this point, there is no, we're recommending no retainage at this point because the job is a hundred percent complete, uh, it's been completed to satisfaction. So we're looking at not having any retainage at this point.
So what happens if the sod don't take?
We do have a, a guarantee from ALAM, um, to, over three years to go back and work on work that needs remedial action, but, uh.
Is that a written agreement?
It is.
Yeah, uh, we're not going to issue the final check payment until we get the, uh, agreement, uh, fully signed. I've got about three quarters of it, I think, or a copy of it. I haven't got the original yet, so until we get the original, then we won't issue the check. I'm expecting the original probably tomorrow.
So my question back up here, is, this is first one that I have ever seen that we have not hold back money after a project for at least a year for that sod will take. I mean, I, this is something new the staff decided to start doing or, or we have always hold money back? I just don't understand why things change here.
We typically have not received this three-year type of guarantee from the contractor, something that we're attempting to do here so that we can move the projects forward. So this, this guarantee is something that's normally not given, like on a state job, you get a one-year performance, but.
So let me ask you this question.
Yep.
So we get a written statement for ALAM, saying three years guaranteed sod or whatever may go wrong. Company goes belly up. Who's liable to repair whatever's, that did not happen that year? Why would we even consider doing that? I, I just. Because you know how companies change, or they merge with another company or, or something else here. I just.
That, that was the way it was written into the contract documents for this particular project. Like I said, this is something that, uh, we, we haven't done usually, but we can, you know, if we don't want to do it going forward, we can look into it.
Mr. Coles?
We used to have trouble with lamp. When a cement is to crack, we used to have a hard job having them come back to fix it. So, I mean, I, I think a retainer should be, should be with a, we take it from all the rest of them. I don't see why, why we can't take them from them. So, I, I'm, I'm, I would say get a retainer, please.
Mayor, please. Lou, you just mentioned in the, that's the way it was in this contract? This contract different from all the other contracts we've signed?
Yes, sir. We, uh, we requested a written guarantee on this particular project, uh, in, in the contract documents for the restoration work. That was.
For the restoration work, but as far as the retainer on the whole project?
Yeah.
The retainage would have been.
The rest of the, the rest of the project has been completed. We've done the punch list. They've completed everything satisfactory. We got the job done with enough time to watch the sod knit into the ground. It looks good out there. We haven't seen any issues with the project.
But I see the mayor's point. We, we put it in a contract that way, saying that we are going to accept a three-year agreement to get all their money back? Is, is that what I'm hearing?
To get all their money.
That there won't be a retainer?
I don't believe we have a retainer, um, set up for, at this point. I can take a look.
But I'm, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
If I make a mistake in that. Just in this contract. You're asking in this contract, it was worded that way?
I'll have to take a look and make sure. I know that we asked for this guarantee specifically in the contract. Now whether or not we said we weren't going to hold any retainage, I'll have to double check. But we did ask for this written guarantee here because there were some issues on other projects.
Mr. Woods?
I'm gonna follow the same line of question. Uh, what were the triggers that caused us to rewrite the contract or rewrite the terms or change the terms?
Typically, Mark, Mark Docstiner is the one that works on the contracts with Public Works staff. He's not here tonight, so I'd have to go back and get his input on why that happened with this specific contract. So we're not gonna have an answer tonight. We'd have to talk to Mark.
We'll have an answer next week?
Yes.
So.
My question, now do we hold this check off and, well, it's gotta go till next week, so.
Simple, we just, we just don't pay him till we get everything straightened out.
Go ahead.
Well, maybe just to clarify, I don't think there's anything in the contract that says you can't hold retainage, but we did specifically ask for this guarantee in the contract. I guess that was what I was trying to say. So there, there is an ability to hold retainage to my knowledge. We can check with Mark and clarify what the city's abilities are, but.
But I always thought every contract that we sign on, on road repairs or road thing. Maybe I, I missed it and, sorry if I missed, I thought there's, have always been that we hold a retainer, partly the retainer for one year. On most of our streets project. I have never paid out a street that I know sitting here, and maybe I, I did and I don't remember, but that we did not hold some type of retainer for a year. I, I, I just don't remember. I mean, it, it's someone my freshman memory. Have we ever done that? Go ahead.
I don't recall a time where we did that, but like loose side, we probably could get the retainer, but I'd like to go back and talk to Mark again before next, next week's meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion for, Mr. Woods?
Well, I'm just in agreement. I'd like to find out the whole background and, and what the purpose was and, and why that, so if you guys could come back or send that to us, I'd appreciate it.
So can we advance this to, to council pending more information? Maybe we'll withhold the retainage at that time next week.
Take it off the consent agenda.
We'll just listen on Public Works Committee report.
Mr. Mayor, there's a motion for a second. We have to approve this?
You have a motion and a second?
Right.
Somebody votes, even if we, even if it passes and it's sent agenda, we can take it out next week anyway. So there's a motion, there's a second to approve pay requests, uh, final payment for ninety-eight thousand, five hundred sixty-six thousand, sixty-four cents. That is motion.
Second.
Okay. On a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman Shockey?
No.
Alderman Sizmarski?
No.
Alderman Yuji Musley?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Um, no.
Alderman Lozara?
Oh.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. Yeah. And then.
Go ahead, Mayor, you have some.
We, we do want this brought forward next week.
Yeah, I'll be on the council agenda.
Okay. Uh, report of recognition, pay request, partial two for ALAM Construction. Anderson Water Main Replacement Phase Two, not to exceed ninety, ninety-two thousand, six hundred twelve dollars and seventy cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? On a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Yuji Musley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Item number nine, report and recognition, pay request, partial, partial three, ALAM Construction, Concrete Construction. For the Addison Water Main Replacement Phase Two and not to exceed a fifty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-six thousand, forty-seven cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Question, how many more payments we have on this?
One.
And is, and before we start the debate next time on the next payment, is this another one? Retainer, there is a retainer on this one.
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Are we complete? I mean, I've driven by a couple of times and I see RJN out there, Public Works out there, a couple of locations. I know we had some leak issues that have been resolved. Uh, and the other part of that question is, we're not gonna sod anything on Addison Road? That's the contract?
I think we're about ninety-five percent complete, um, at this point, just some small punch list items. Um, I'm not aware of any, you're right, there was some piping issues before, but right now it's just small housekeeping items.
Actually, I think if I am mistaken, they also working with the county on that to make sure that bike path was put back together the way it was supposed to be put together too. The reason too. All right, so I have a motion, I have a second on a roll call, please. Question, Mr. Woods?
Yeah, your last statement, uh, raised another question. The putting together Addison Road that walking path where the sidewalk ends, uh, from Wooddale and then it turns into, uh, just a, a dirt path till it hits the bike path. That's always been an issue with a lot of the residents, uh, as far as being able to walk there or ride a bike. The one thing that I have noticed, I know a couple of people told me we can't do anything. Some people said we, you know, could at least make it a gravel path. I think part of the issue now, when I went and looked at it myself, is the slope, the angle going into the creek at that, uh, location is much greater than it used to be. If, if there's something, it's, it's kinda dangerous if somebody does and people do walk there all the time, could fall right into the creek. That's all, I'll, uh, it, it actually got narrowed and the, the pitch there is steeper than it was before. So if we could actually look into that, I'd appreciate it.
Anything on your?
I'm in agreement with Alderman Woods that it's been brought up to my attention as well, this specific area and it's just a short piece of land that doesn't have a path or sidewalk. And, uh, and then a previous employee had checked on it with county and was given a statement that it's too close to the creek, so the forest won't let you, um, put the pavement on there, but I would think we could do like a pounded gravel or something like that, just to extend it. So I would appreciate checking again on that and seeing what we can do, perhaps even a creative, um, solution to it, something permeable instead of, um, a hard concrete surface. Thank you.
Okay. So there was a motion, there was a second, a roll call vote?
Or do we do it already?
Okay. Roll call vote.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Yuji Musley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries. Report and recognition, Royal Oaks Engineering. I believe, uh, our engineer firm is going to, guy, take us through that project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm Jason Flew with Baxter and Woodman, and, uh, I just wanted to briefly go through, uh, the Royal Oaks subdivision improvements. Uh, as you all know, you asked us to, uh, take a look at Royal Oaks, uh, as far as a preliminary engineering study so that we could study the subdivision, um, get a more, get a better idea of, of the extent of the improvements that need to be done, look at a schedule, look at cost estimates, things like that, reach out to the residents. Uh, so tonight, what I, what I wanna do is show, uh, where we're at as far as, as with the, uh, preliminary study. Uh, we're almost complete. We're about ninety, ninety percent complete with the report. So we wanna come back, get a little bit of input from you, uh, finalize the report, and then, then we ask that the committee consider a work order for phase two engineering so that we can finish the, um, the design, put the project out for bids and, and start construction next year. So first of all, the need for the improvements. Uh, as many of you know, uh, there's a lot of water main breaks, uh, over the past few years out there in Royal Oaks. Uh, actually, I was out there with, uh, Mark today and he pointed out four or five spots that we've had breaks in the last couple of years. There's also significant flooding out there during heavy storm events. Uh, there's sanitary sewer backups and the existing roads are in poor condition. Uh, so the objectives of the preliminary engineering study. Uh, first, we wanted to determine the scope of the improvements. We wanna look at everything that, that really needs to be done out there and then start to talk about, uh, cost estimates, schedules and, and what's realistic, and then kinda work through what the scope of, of the improvements are gonna be. Um, then we also performed a drainage study to kinda see how the area drained, try to, try to figure out what the problems that they're having out there with drainage and some possible solutions for that. Uh, and then in, to estimate the total project cost and then also to prepare a project schedule. So as far as the water main replacement, um, the plan is to replace the existing failing six-inch cast iron mains with new eight-inch ductile iron mains. Also to replace the services, the service boxes, fire hydrants, uh, and then to provide some looping in the cul-de-sacs to improve the water quality and the water pressure. And also to replace the looping mains, uh, replace a looping main in Wood Lane Court, uh, and to replace and abandon loop, looping main on the west side of the detention basin. Uh, currently, there's a water main that runs on the west side of the, uh, detention basin that was, uh, there were several breaks and so it was capped off and abandoned several years ago. So the plan was to, to replace that, to put, put that back in service. Uh, and then as far as, is the looping in the courts are concerned, right now the water mains simply stub out and all of the port. And so these mains need to be flushed probably four times a year because the water just doesn't flow through those types of mains, through, through the mains very well. The pressure isn't very good and the, the water quality isn't the best when you have a dead end main like that. So the plan would be to actually loop the water main around those courts to improve that pressure and water quality. Uh, the streetlights are, are, this is, this is more of a discussion topic. This wasn't originally included in, in the CIP scope. Um, but, uh, when we reached out to the residents at the public meeting, this is, this is one of the items that the, that the residents did want the city to consider. Uh, currently, the existing lights out there are natural gas streets, like, streetlights, and the residents, uh, claim that the mains are leaking gas, that you can actually smell the gas as you walk down the street. They are owned by the homeowners association. However, the city pays for, for, for the gas, so maybe there's an opportunity for a cost sharing, uh, with the streetlights, but we wanted to bring that before you. Uh, next, we would reconstruct the roads, full depth, uh, asphalt pavement. We would, for the most part, match the existing width. Um, we reached out to the residents with a survey, uh, as far as whether they wanted sidewalks and curbs and gutters. Uh, they overwhelmingly did not want sidewalks, however, they did want curb and gutter. So the plan would be to fill in, um, the existing ditches and, and remove the culverts and to replace that with, uh, curbs and gutters and, and storm sewer systems. Uh, and then we also reviewed the, um, the TV tapes of the sanitary sewer and we identified several areas that, um, should be lined in the, in the sewer, uh, to, so that we can minimize the amount of inflow, uh, infiltration into the, into the system and to improve the, um, the flow of the sewers. There's, uh, two minor point, point repairs also that we would take care of. Uh, the big item in this project was the drainage study. Uh, as you know, this area has been flooded nearly every major rain event. Um, so what we did is we took a look at, uh, took a look at how this drainage system works. You can see here, here is, uh, the retention basin or retention pond, Royal, Royal Oaks Pond. And so what happens with the system is all of the storm water in the subdivision is collected kinda piecemeal. I mean, as, as you know, there's culverts out there, there's some filled in ditches, there's some storm sewers, there's PVC pipe, there's really kind of a hodgepodge storm sewer system. It all makes its way into the detention basin. Once it reaches a certain level of the outfall pipe elevation on the north side of the pond, the water travels to the northeast through a series of storm sewer pipes into this detention basin up near the, uh, the condos to the north. And then from there, it continues on through another series of pipe, um, into the, um, the ditches on the west side of Route eighty-three, reaches a certain elevation, and then it crosses eighty-three over into the school. The problem with the, with the system is that, um, there's a series of restrictor pipes along the entire route through various points. And, and so simply upsizing the outfall pipe of this pond isn't necessarily going to help. Um, because these basins are full during large storm events. And the other problem is that the high water level of these other ponds that it drains to are about the same elevation. And the other problem is that the high water level of these other ponds that it drains to are about the same elevation or higher, um, as this Royal Oaks Pond, and so we can't simply upsize pipes because this water is restricted downstream. There's simply nowhere, there's no way for that, for that to drain out. What, what further complicates the problem is this subdivision is, is, is in a bowl for the most part. You can see some contour lines here, this yellow contour line around this lake here, and this matches this contour line here, and, and then the next, these are ten-foot contour lines, uh, and the next contour line is, is out, that continues on, uh, I think over in here, but it all, it all drains towards that pond. There's really no overland flow route for when that pond fills up. There's nowhere for it to go. So, what we determined in the study is, is the best solution for this is to provide some additional onsite detention. We can't get the water out of the pond faster. All we can do is provide some additional area for the water to sit until it can slowly drain out to the north. So, as I mentioned, we're gonna add some onsite detention. The way we're gonna do that is we're gonna oversize the storm sewer pipes under the roads. We don't wanna change the size of the pipes flowing into the pond because we don't want the water to get there any faster, so we, we're gonna maintain those pipes, but we're gonna upsize all of the pipes leading into those, those pipes before the pond, under the road, so that we can store some of this additional water while it gives it a chance to slowly drain into the pond. We're also gonna lower the elevation of the outfall pipe of the detention basin. I'm gonna go back a slide here so we can take a look at this. So, on the north side of the pond here, there's a manhole with a pipe on both the north and the south sides. The, the pipe on the south side drains from the, the pond, and then on the north side drains out of the pond into that next detention basin. There's an eighteen-inch vertical difference between the two pipes. The pipe on the pond side is higher, so there's an opportunity to lower the pipe on the pond side as much as eighteen inches, and it would still flow out to the north. So, what that would do is would lower the normal, uh, elevate, water elevation of the pond so that when we do experience significant storm events, there's additional storage in that pond to handle that water until it, until it can flow out to the north. We're gonna fill in most of the ditches, but we are gonna maintain some of them, especially at the low points, uh, to provide additional storage as, as some of the, the water, uh, as some of, all of the water's not gonna be, be able to be handled by the, the oversized storm sewer. Did you have a question?
It's almost done.
Yeah. So, our preliminary cost estimate is, is about five point six million dollars. The CIP budget is about four point six, so we're approximately a million dollars over that CIP budget, um, but as I mentioned, there are items such as the streetlights, and then some other items I'll get to on the next slide, um, that, that are up for discussion, uh, as far as, you know, do we need these included or not? And, and that's part of the reason why we're here tonight, to, to kinda finalize this, and then we can go on and finalize the report and move on to the phase two. So, here are some possible cost reductions. Uh, the water main looping in the courts, um, you know, talking to Mark Thiede, and I agree with him, we believe this is important because of the, the water quality issues, the water pressure, and so we don't, we don't have to flush the hydrants every, four times a year. And since we're gonna have the pavement and everything under construction and torn up, now's as good a time as any to take care of this, since that's really what should be done. Uh, the water main looping on the west side of the pond, um, that can really, that can wait. If we were going to do that at a later time, we're not gonna disturb the road, that can be done at a later time. The street lighting, as we discussed, uh, these are owned by the homeowners association, so there could be some potential savings there, or, or maybe there's an opportunity for cost sharing with the residents. Um, the sanitary sewer lining, when we looked at the sanitary sewer, um, it was in fair condition. It wasn't in as poor a condition as, as we originally thought it might be, uh, and, and so it only needs to be lined. It doesn't need, you know, large-scale replacement. And the lining, again, that can be done at a later time. That, that's not something that's gonna disturb the pavement that we're gonna reconstruct as part of the project. Uh, oversizing the storm sewers, we believe, is important, um, so that we can provide some additional storage underneath the road, uh, for that storm water so that it's not sitting in everybody, in everybody's yards. So, there's a potential savings of approximately, approximately a million dollars. However, um, we believe that the water main looping in the courts is important, and the, the oversizing the storm sewer is also important, so, so maybe it's, uh, closer to five or six hundred thousand dollars in savings. As far as the schedule, there's a high point in the subdivision, um, a little bit east of Royal Oaks Drive on Sherwood. So, that's a logical place to break the project. Uh, so, so stage one would go in twenty thirteen, and that would essentially be the areas to the north of that, um, ridge line, and then to the south would be stage two in, in twenty fourteen. Um, so, our preliminary schedule moving forward, as I said before, uh, we have a work order tonight before you, for consideration, so that we can move, start moving forward on phase two. We'd like to have another public meeting with the, the residents in Royal Oaks to, to kind, to come to them and show them, uh, this is what our construction plans are, this is, you know, more definitive schedule, more definitive, uh, scope of what we're gonna do. We'd like to hold that in February, so, so we really don't have a whole lot of time to waste here. And then have final plans, specs and estimates in March, open the bids in March, and then begin construction in May of twenty thirteen of phase one. Uh, then we'd continue on. Later in the year, we'd put, put the, uh, bid package together for phase two, have another public meeting, uh, for those residents up, uh, on that portion. Final plans in January, open bids in February, and then again, begin construction in April or May of twenty fourteen. So, with that, I'll open it up to, to any questions.
All right. Can I ask my question first?
You're the chairman. Do anything you want.
I, I'll ask my question first. Huh? Streetlights? If they leaking gas now, why aren't they turned off? Or why didn't we call the gas company? That's a safety issue, far from concern. So, why answer that question? The other thing is, the association owns the streetlights. Am I correct?
Correct.
So, in this project, you were looking at cost share or, or us putting them in?
Yeah, as I said, I, I wanted to bring all the scope items, you know, out for discussion so that we could, we could discuss whether...
Okay.
This was included. The residents asked that, uh, the city consider paying for new streetlights.
I will tell you, in the past, we have tried up here Ezra Alderman in our, in our own ward to get streetlights in our area. If I think I'm gonna sit up here tonight to give a blessing to go ahead and put streetlights in them and cost sharing on them, we have never done it in the city in the past in a subdivision, and I'll tell you, you go to ward four, my ward, it's dark can be, and I, and I, I'm having a hard enough time getting two streetlights in our, uh, subdivision, and, and I'm saying, we're putting almost four million dollars up into that project. Do you care to comment on that?
Yeah, I wanna comment on the streetlights. Basically, if, if the city's gonna go ahead and do something like that, then you better start bringing up those private streets that we're already, we had a discussion about. I mean, heck, you can add that to the list, Jeff, because, you know, we've got...
So...
We've got some private roads residents want us to, want us to fix, which they own.
So, again, the streetlights, I cannot sit here and, and as a chairman, I recommend that we go ahead and, and come up with the streetlights. We already paid for the gas for it, so, Jeff?
Let's keep in mind, these are some of the things that came up at that public meeting. Um, these aren't, you know, recommendations that we should do this. This is, the purpose of this meeting is to gather input from you guys, tell us what you want to include in the project scope.
But again, if I'm awarding a contract tonight for a hundred, whatever, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, you try and tell me this ain't in that part of the project, did the...
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand dollars of it?
Well, twenty thousand dollars in the engineering scope, but I was gonna recommend that we have to...